City of Lawrence Common Council, the meeting is now called to order. Today is Monday, June 6, 2022, and it is now 6:30 p.m. Can we all please stand for Pledge of Allegiance and prayer?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I pray for your presence, your peace, and your power as we do the business of this great city. I pray that when we leave, that you protect everyone up here on this council, everyone who lives in this community, and all that serve in this community. In your blessed name we pray, amen.
We have a quorum. All councilors are present. Next on the agenda is comments of council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do we have any?
Madam President, I have one. I just want the council to take a look at the landlord registry again in the city of Lawrence. I've been having a couple of people call me and tell me that the landlords are not in compliance with some of the things. Indianapolis, their landlord registry is not up to par. It's not getting the job done. And this would help keep the Lawrence beautiful. It's not fair for the homeowners who try to keep up their property and maintain it. And the Department of Public Works has already dished out $24,000 for high weeds and grass violations. So that would kind of help them a little here in our city if we could just have it like maybe $25 registry, or maybe 10. I know Indianapolis, theirs is failed, so I want to put Lawrence so we can shine with ours if we do have one. And the 2% that was applied for the property taxes, that's just for the property taxes in general. That doesn't hit the, it hits the landlords because it's not occupied by citizens.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President, first off, I wanted to make an acknowledgement for the farmer's market. I've heard phenomenal things about it. We had a really great opening this past weekend, and there were some great vendors. So just wanted to put that out there. The other thing I would like to also say, I was in the finance meeting, and I was driving in late, and I wanted to read a conversation really quick that I had with the controller just so I can get it in because I was kind of writing, reading it over Zoom. So it was in regard-
Is this in reference to something that is, we're going to discuss on the agenda?
Yes, I just didn't know if it was this the time, or can I say it before we start talking about it down there?
Let's hit it when we, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay, that's okay. Just save that thought.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other councilors?
Madam President.
Yes, Counsel Wells.
I wanted to give a thank you. I am not sure to who, the street department for sure, either Scott Salisbury or Jim Henigan, I suppose. The lady that lives at 47th and Van Cleve has been getting her yard damaged severely by the big trucks that are cutting in the corner. And they promised to put the ballards up, and they did exactly that, and they looked real nice, did a good job. And I also would like to thank our police department for heading off this car club that has came last year, I'm assuming it's the same one, to the Lawrence Park and doing burnouts and wheelies and donuts and all the crazy driving that they do. But they headed that off and got it stopped before it got started. And so, thank you to our police department for being on top of that.
Thank you. Any other councilors?
Madam President, I just want to recognize Shannon Kohl, the former mayor of Martinsville, is in attendance tonight, so welcome.
Welcome. Thank you.
Is that what you were asking, Kathy?
Yes. Any other councilors? Okay, seen none. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes of regular meetings, May 2 and May 18, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, please.
I'll second.
Motion, Counsel Russo-Moroff. Second, Counselor Giles. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion carries. Unanimous? Minutes. Next, we have signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment for June 6, 2022. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion, Counsel Wells.
I'll second.
Second, Counselor Denny. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands to approve the claims and payments? Motion carries. Reports of committees, finance.
Madam Chair, the finance committee met tonight, and we had two items on the agenda, Resolution Number 9 and Proposal 13. Resolution Number 9, we had met and had discussions and presentations regarding the, that resolution several months ago. And tonight, the motion was made to not recommend it to the full council, and so it was sent back from finance with a no recommendation. We also discussed Proposal Number 13, which is amending the 2022 civil salary ordinance, which is, basically, it's to raise the pay for paramedics from $22.80 to $26 to make our, or at least to bring our paramedics within a competitive pay structure. And that was recommended unanimously out of council, out of the finance committee to the council.
Great, thank you. Parks.
Thank you. Yes, the Parks Department met this evening, and we discussed Proposal Number 11, and it was, motion was made, and it was unanimous to approve, to send to the full council.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the public hearing for Proposal Number 10, 2022.
Proposal Number 10, 2022, introduced by Counselors Denny and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget as approved by the Common Council with respect to the Stormwater Fund.
Okay, so all those wishing to address the Common Council for the public hearing on Proposal Number 10, 2022, appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget as approved by the Common Council with respect to the Stormwater Fund, please step forward when I call your name, provide your name and your address. Please note, per council rules, at any regular session of the council, the presiding officer may allow time for, this isn't comments, this is for a public hearing, you will be limited to five minutes unless I extend that time. Any person desiring to address the council, as I mentioned before, needs to step forward, state their name and address for the record. So the first person on the list, the public hearing is now open, is Robert Schlefer. I probably still am pronouncing it wrong. Schlefer? Longay?
Thank you, Madam President. Robert Schlefer, 10423 Rainbow Lane. With reference to Proposal 10, two stormwater project financing fund philosophies that have been discussed, a bond approach and a cash approach. And on March 7, when addressing a group of concerned citizens in this very room, President Chavez says, "I get both philosophies, I really do. I'd love to see a balance, I'd love to see a combination." The finance council has discounted the strong financial merits of a combination and block it by being heard from the common council. It also appears that Proposal 10 was not built by licensed professional engineers and financial experts. Rather, as it was described by Counselor Denny, that sounded to me more like a proverbial back of the napkin arithmetic exercise. By Counselor Denny's own mission, the cash proposal, Number 10, will likely need to have financing secured in order to complete all projects at whatever future financing rate it happens to be. On March 7, when meeting with citizens about funding of stormwater, Counselor Giles stated, "What I'm saying is, it's all about opinion. To that, I ask, should it not be all about long-term fiscal responsibility? As concerned citizens, I've come forward to engage in public discourse. In doing so, I've been accused of being a paid actor who addresses the council, collects his money, and flies off to Florida. I've also been told by council that because of my age, I don't care about the long term of Lawrence. But these and similar accusations are not the problem here. I feel those are a smokescreen to another issue. I believe a councilman in this very room, who was next to Mr. Denny, the co-sponsor of the proposal, said something to the effect of, 'I'll be damned if I give the mayor a win on stormwater.' My friends, I feel bad."
Okay, I'm going to stop right here, I'm going to stop right here, Mr. Schlefer. I want to make sure that not only you as a citizen that comes forward, but I request and demand the same thing as the council, that we keep the comments non-repetitive, make sure they're un-civil, they're not rude, discourteous, or insulting. There is just no room for it here in this council meeting. So please proceed and use your words cautiously. Thank you, sir.
Sure, sure, I'm just trying to speak the truth. So using the pay to constituents as pawns in a partisan game of picking winners and losers is not what we should be doing. Counselors can vote for Proposal 10 tonight and pick winners and losers, or you can vote no on Proposal 10 and bring a fiscally responsible, balanced, bond and cash approach to a public hearing so all 50,000-plus residents of the city of Lawrence can win. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next on the list, we have Sandy Schlefer.
Sandy Schlefer, 10423 Rainbow Lane. I'm asking council to vote no on Proposal 10 tonight, and please consider a fiscally responsible approach, a blend of bond and cash. To not take this approach makes me wonder how many councilors that currently serve the city of Lawrence understand what it means to be responsible for the funds entrusted to them by the citizens of Lawrence. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, we have Joan Carter.
No, they've signed the wrong list, they want to be on the comments at the end.
Oh, okay, okay, no problem. So those are the only two citizens that I had signed up to speak on behalf of Proposal Number 10, 2022. If there's no other citizens who would like to speak, the public hearing is now closed. Okay, now I'm going to open the floor to public hearing for Proposal Number 11, 2022.
Proposal Number 11, 2022, introduced by Counselor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the Common Council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget with respect to the general fund.
So no one has signed up for Proposal Number 11? No? Okay, thank you. Okay, since we do not have any citizens who've signed up to speak on behalf of Proposal Number 11, 2022, the public hearing is now closed. We're going to wait one brief moment for Counsel Russell to return, and then we will proceed. Okay, I'm going to switch the agenda around a little bit while we're waiting for Counsel Russell, who has a brief emergency, okay? I am going to allow for public comment. Joan Carter, if you could please step forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Evening. My name is Joan Carter. My address, my home address, is 10400 Courageous Drive, Indianapolis, Indiana, 46236.
Right ahead, you have five minutes.
Oh, on the issue that we spoke about this morning. Yeah, I'm here because I was concerned on this new property that's being sold, and I'm not really sure of the details. I was here to find out more details on exactly how much of that land is going to be, I guess, renovated. There is a lake on that land that is adjacent to the properties. Let me back up. I own 12 units on 7200 block of Ferris Street, which is adjacent to that property being purchased or being renovated or thought to be purchased. I'm not sure exactly where we're at with that. But that property has been there, I've owned the property, my property's for 15 years. And it does have a lake on it. It is a, my street is a dead end, and I do have some concerns with what exactly is going to be built on that land. Of course, because of my property values, the aesthetics, because it's very wooded there, and most of the tenants that live in my units are seniors, citizens, and they're also my family members. So I would want the neighborhood to stay, you know, very safe. And I spend a lot of time down there. As a matter of fact, I have boots on today because I've been down there planting flowers. So I have put a lot of effort over the years and money, and I've, you know, put new roofs, and we built the properties from, pretty much, from dilapidated units to very thriving rental units. So I am concerned on what's going to be built there and how it's going to affect me, so, and my tenants and my family. So I'm here to really find out what it is and how it's going to affect me, and what can I do to maybe vote no on it, or I don't know all the logistics involved and what I need to do, I just decide I need to come and find out today.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for your time. And I'm sure that that matter will be heard, and you'll get more information for sure.
Okay.
So thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you for letting me speak.
Tony, is it Faze?
Faze.
Faze, okay.
Crazy Faze, that's the only way people realize it. Hi, I'm Tony Faze. My home address is 106 Walnut Court in Noblesville, Indiana. That's my residence. However, I also own one of the units along with Joan in that same area. I have some of the same concerns. You know, we're kind of finding out about it short, trying to understand this whole process as citizens because we don't get a chance to do this sort of thing every day. I understand some of the issues with the property itself, of why it might not be conducive to building on it because there is a natural spring in that area. I understand that there's some sewer issues and that sort of stuff about being able to, to be able to be built on. I'm not really sure, again, how much of that would possibly be developed. And I understand that there's a towing business, which I'm pretty familiar with through some other dealings, that is looking at acquiring that property. If that's the case, I have similar concerns because it's been my experience in where those types of operations form. Let's say that the entire area starts to have a pretty good degradation, it invites a lot of savory people, a lot of break-ins because people are trying to break in to steal things from the vehicles and all that sort of stuff. So I think it's something that's just a magnet that attracts a lot of things that certainly my residents and Joan's residents and anybody living there would not want to have that additional cumbersome thing upon them. You know, one of the things that's, that my residents have enjoyed is because that's been a really quiet street for the most part, having the wooded area, you know, you have that kind of seclusion, and that's one of the things that's kind of attracted a lot of people to that area. So I have similar concerns, and certainly like to find out more about that, and, you know, I hope the city chooses wise in what they do to develop or not develop in that particular area. As a side note, I'd like to might find out more about this landlord registration thing, which I've not been aware of before. Maybe that's a topic for another conversation, but my comment on that is, I've been involved in real estate for, going on three decades. I also was fortunate enough, a number of years ago, to serve on the board of a large real estate investing group here of town, one of the, actually, one of the largest in the country that's backed by a national organization, so I'm not unfamiliar with those types of issues. I would certainly like to find out more about this and comment on some of the registry stuff because there's a reason that the Indianapolis as one is a dismal failure. My viewpoint is, and I would love to discuss with you or anybody else involved, why I think that that would be a very, very, very poor idea to have a registry. It puts an undue burden on the landlords. And I'll be quite honest, there's many things, but I'll comment on one thing on that. One of the reasons that a lot of people have found out not to register for that is because it puts an unduly target on those landlords because then we're easier to find, and it seems to be that our organization that I've been a part of has found out that the people that did register for that, basically, were always the ones that were getting all the complaint letters and stuff like that. Where a great deal of the problems that come up on that sort of thing with the registry, I understand, is usually with out-of-state landlords that don't have the right communications and that sort of stuff, and that's why problems have. There was even at one time, when they initially talked about the registry before they set it up, that they were going to actually make the landlord's home address public record. Now, I don't know how many of you are landlords, is anybody that's on the committee that's a landlord? I'm sure probably you may have had an unpleasant situation with a tenant if you've actually had to ask them to find someplace else to leave or another situation like that. The last thing you'd want to do is have it very easy for a unhappy tenant to find out where you live and knock on your door at 6 o'clock at the night and probably, possibly have the barrel of a gun aimed at your head. There's a lot of crazy people out there. And so there's a lot of things that's really bad with that whole idea of the registry concept. I'd be more than happy to chat with you more-
Yeah, so I would definitely say that that seems to be a hot-button topic for Counselor Freeman, so I'm sure that she would love to have a conversation and get your thoughts and ideas. So thank you so much for your time, for coming forward and for making comment.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is unfinished business, Proposal Number 10, 2022.
Proposal Number 10, 2022, introduced by Counselors Denny and Giles. A proposal for an ordinance appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget as approved by the Common Council with respect to the Stormwater Fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion, Counselor Denny. Second.
I'll second.
Second, Counsel Russo-Moroff. Discussion, and I think Counsel Russell wanted to read something.
It was in regards to 9, not this one, but I can, they're both kind of go together, so it would be okay if I read it now.
No, that's fine.
Okay. I was able to email with the controller, just because you had asked us to ask, you know, kind of get, use this time wisely and ask questions, and the controller responded very timely, and he, of course, now I'm trying to find it, I apologize. Give me a quick second. That's, hold on, just 20 seconds. Oh my goodness, okay. Sorry. What is happening? Technical difficulty, I apologize. Can, can somebody, see if somebody else real quick while I'm pulling this up?
Sure. Anyone else want to make comment?
Okay, I'm back. Sorry. Okay, it says, so the question that I asked was, "Why is debt a better option for paying for a major capital projects than using cash on hand?" His response was, "By issuing debt, you are gaining access to future cash flows in the present. This allows you to leverage those future dollars now on much-needed capital projects. Additionally, by having the bonds in hand, you can play and, you can plan, sorry, and coordinate multiple capital projects simultaneously. This is beneficial for capital planning because you know exactly how much you have to allocate towards those projects. It also reduces costs when you can hire a firm to design multiple projects at once rather than pay-as-you-go option. With the pay-as-you-go option, you may find yourself putting a project on hold after designing it while you save up enough funds to construct it. While you wait, there could be an increase in the deterioration of the asset that makes your design outdated." I would also add that there is an equity factor as well, often referred to as generational equity. This concept refers to the fact that users of a capital project will change over its useful life. It is viewed as fair to spread those costs out so they are paid throughout the asset's useful life. Here is a great link from the Municipal Research and Services Center of Washington, MRSC, that goes into further detail on this concept. Lastly, bonding mitigates another important risk, which is change in priorities. Whether there is an administration change or a council change, by bonding these projects, you are ensuring that they are going to be completed. We would be legally required to use bond funds on those specific projects, thus mitigating the risk of any future priority changes. Second question is really short, would this stormwater bond overbond the city? No. This is his response, no. The Lawrence Stormwater District is separate from the civil city. Issuing a bond under the Stormwater District will not impact the civil city's ability to issue bonds.
Okay, any other councilors like to make comment?
I do have one more. With, with that being said, just from doing my own research, I want to clarify my vote to the constituents in my area that I will be voting no on this. It is not that I am voting against stormwater, I just feel that there's better options out there that could help address all of the issues rather than the pay-as-you-go. So I just wanted to clarify my vote before we vote. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to make one comment because I want to make this extremely clear for the record. I voted in support of the stormwater projects in December with the financing option of bonds. The discussion or option for cash was not, in December, a discussion we were having, nor was it one that I had considered or was on the table. Since that time, that option has been brought forward to this council. As Mr. Schlefer expressed during his comments, I did state that I felt like a combination or somewhere in between was right. I still feel that way, but I feel that at this time, I will be voting in favor of Resolution Number 9, voting in favor, or cash or bond is voting in favor of stormwater. Thank you. Any other councilors?
I have one question, if I may. If we are to vote yes for Proposal Number 10, which is to, as I understand it, use cash resources for projects as indicated, would that preclude us from doing a bond at any other later dates?
The answer to that would be no. The answer to that would be no. The projects are not all-inclusive, okay? We have more stormwater projects that are on that list. We have tons of stormwater projects in this city. So the answer to that would be no. Does anybody disagree with that, council?
I disagree.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam President, if I may. I had a lengthy conversation with Deputy Controller last week, I think it was. And I was told that, like on this Rainbow Lane project, that half of the money has done been spent in engineering costs, and we have yet, I guess, not have put a shovel in the ground. Do we not have, and this is just kind of a hypothetical question, I suppose, but do we not have in-house engineering that we could not be spending so much money on engineers and try to put, you know, some of that money more to a, to the shovels in the ground, if you will? But to me, that seemed concerning that, you know, half of the, half of the expense that we've been allocated for Rainbow Lane has done been spent for engineering fees, unless I misunderstood the man when he, you know, told me all this, but I, you know, he repeated to me, you know, more than once. So anyway, that's a concern that I have is the, is just the cost of engineering before we ever even actually make any actual repairs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other councilors? Seeing none, we have a motion, Councilor Denny. Second, Councilor Rusamoroff. All in favor by a show of hands, proposal number 10, 2022. Seven, eight, seven, seven.
Seven.
Seven. Opposed? Proposal number 10, 2022 is approved, voted seven to two. Next on the agenda, we have proposal number 11, 2022.
Proposal number 11, 2022, introduced by Councilor Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget with respect to the general fund.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion, Councilor Rusamoroff.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Councilor Rusamoroff, Council Wells. This is, proposal number 11 was recommended out of the Parks Committee. It actually went to finance first. It was recommended out of finance, and then it was recommended out of parks. Any discussion on proposal number 11, 2022?
Just a point of clarification. This is the amended proposal number 11 that's recommended out of finance and then went to the parks.
Do we need a motion to accept?
Okay, then we need a motion to accept the amended version. Do I have Councilor Rusamoroff?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Council Wells. Okay, this is a motion to approve the amended version. It was amended out of finance. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor by a show of hands? Motion carries unanimous. Now we need a motion to accept or to adopt the proposal number 11.
I'll make a motion to adopt proposal number 11.
Second it.
Okay, we've got motion, Rusamoroff, second, Council Wells. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have resolution number nine, 2022.
Resolution number nine, 2022, introduced by Council Chevlot. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, approving the issuance of stormwater revenue bonds of the city of Lawrence Stormwater Management District and matters related thereto.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Motion, Councilor Chevlot, second, Councilor Russell. Any discussion?
Madam President, I'm going to attempt to answer Councilor Wells's question. I don't know the details of your conversation, but I think I've got it, and it was mentioned earlier. The scope of the projects is pretty vast, but because proposal 10 only has a certain amount of money for this one project, they're going to have to hire an individual engineering firm for just that project, whereas what proposal nine was going to do was put all of the projects under one scope so that you can go to an engineering firm and they could plan for all of the projects and not do individual projects. So I think I'm, I'm not going to speak for the controller's office, but I know enough about this based on my research and sponsoring this, that I think that was the intention was to try to get the engineering done for all of the projects, but because this Rainbow Lane one was separated, they had to go out and hire an individual engineering firm for just that project. Don't quote me on that, but I think that's probably what is happening, so.
This is, this is true. Madam President, can I chime in?
Sure.
To answer Mr. Council Wells's question, no, we do not have in-house engineering capacities to do a full design on a drainage project. That does not, that includes anything from survey. I mean, we can plan it, and I can review the plans, but the capacity to do the survey, doing a CAD work, doing design, no, we do not have. We, I'm the only engineer for the city, and we do not have the resources, and a lot of the cities don't do it by themselves. They do hire consulting firms who have all these capacities to do design. And when he, when Council Wells referred to half the money, no, we did not spend half the money on, just on the design. We only spent close to 10% of the construction. Rainbow Line is going to take $700,000 to $800,000. And we are barely, we haven't even spent close to $100,000. Usually, design fees is roughly around 10%, 10% to 15%, and that's what we usually spend. So we, we still, I mean, based on the council approval, we still need money for construction. But I could figure, I figured out how to, we had some money from last year that we used to start design on the project, and the design usually takes 12 to 14 months is what it's doing now. So to answer the question, no, we do not have the in-house capacity to design any of those projects.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. All in favor to approve resolution number nine, 2022. Okay, resolution number nine, 2022, not passed. Next, we have proposal number 13, 2022.
Proposal number 13, 2022, introduced by Council Denny. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, amending the 2022 civil salary ordinance.
Okay, this was recommended out of the finance committee. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion, Council Russell, second, Council Denny. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor by a show of hands? Motion carries unanimous. Next, we have new business, proposal number 12, 2022.
Proposal number 12, 2022, introduced by Council Rusamoroff. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, appropriating additional funds and amending the 2022 budget with respect to the local road and street fund.
Okay, this will be assigned to finance. Next, we have proposal number 14, 2022.
Ordinance number, proposal number 14, 2022, introduced by Council Chavis. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, authorizing the city of Lawrence to become a member of the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7.7.
Okay, Mayor, do you want to come forward or have someone come forward about that and maybe just give a brief overview on what it is? I was able to read through a lot of it, but it's a lot there. Maybe you could simplify it.
Because this is something that the mayors of central Indiana have been talking about for the last, probably the last probably 12 months, but we're not, this is not anything unique to us. Northern Indiana has, has one of these, has a southern Indiana. But essentially, the simple way to understand this is to think of it as creating an RDC for central Indiana cities. What it does is it would put us in much better position to be able to receive both state and federal grants. It would also share the costs of projects that could be probably high-end. We're talking about projects that may be in the neighborhood of $40 to $50 million. But if you have 10 or 12 cities who are, who are also buying into that and creating that, it reduces the impact on budgets. If, if it was a federal grant, for example, we got a $100 million project, and we had 10 cities in the, in the RDC, it was an 80% match. Most federals are 80%. So I would reduce it to $20 million. That would mean each of the cities that would benefit from the project would only have to respond for $2 million of that. It essentially gives central Indiana much greater bargaining power for bargain, for trying to get federal grant, federal grant situations. We're all kind of unfortunately involved with what's happening in the northeast side, Fishers, Noblesville, the expansion of I-69. Projects like that cost an awfully lot of money. Just a few years ago, the town of Fishers got themselves a bit of a jam. They were building I-37 through part of Fishers, and it went into a cost overrun situation in which Fishers could have been responsible for nearly $6 million to get the project done. Fortunately, the state of Indiana stepped in, as did the federal government stepped in and shared some of that cost. This is simply kind of making that, that happen for each project that we have that to depend upon. So far, I believe, as of tonight, I believe it's 20th of Indianapolis right now, we will be the eighth or ninth city that will have both adopted, it takes two things, it takes a proposal and a resolution to get it in place. So we will be, I believe, the ninth one to be involved there. Fishers, Noblesville, Carmel, Westfield, Greenfield, Lawrence, Beach Grove, Speedway are all currently in that, so, okay?
Yeah, and I think, I think actually I read that Indianapolis passed it as well.
Yeah, whatever their last council was, they passed the same night, so.
Yeah.
But don't feel bad, it's, it's been a long, arduous process getting us together and trying to get this in front of you, but we just actually, at the last sort of meeting, I'm sorry, the last Chichio meeting, we went out, the mayor decided to go out and then apply to their councils in there, so, okay?
Okay, and maybe if there's one thing you could just confirm, but it's my understanding that bonding, LOIT, and everything is outside of RDC. That is not in scope.
The important thing to understand here is there's no financial obligation at this point. Everybody will have a vote. Anaps will actually have two votes on, on whatever project it is. So before anything can be approved or any financing is approved, every city will have to be, will buy into it. You really have the responsibility to show regional impact, not just local impact. So that's kind of what the pressure is there.
Okay.
Anything else?
Okay, one other question. So how do we know, or what do you believe, or how do you believe that Lawrence will get its fair share? Like, we just won't be paying for everybody else's projects?
Well, we'd be on us, and of course, we should be rather leery based upon our stormwater history. The responsibility is, once a project is presented, you will have a coalition of several mayors who will present to the group. It'll be, it'll go before, it'll go before councils, so everyone's going to have to buy into it. You'll have to demonstrate what the actual impact would be for those cities. Now, we can't guarantee that every city will get the same impact.
Right.
What we can say is that the project, once upon being completed, would help a lot of different people. I'll give you one example, and then I'll stop there. We currently have an intersection at 86th and Carroll Road. It's that terrible intersection that's right there on the, on the, on the Mary line. Three different cities actually own that territory, McCordville, Lawrence, and Indianapolis. I have appealed to both Indianapolis and McCordville, if they'd be willing to assist us in putting a roundabout there. So far, I haven't gotten any, any cooperation, but bringing this up and making this a possibility would make that much more likely to happen.
Like the trails with connectivity and stuff like that?
I'm not sure that trails will be a big part of this. Trails tend to have their own kind of pocket of money, but you've seen Next Level and so on. I'm not saying it can't be. Wouldn't be something, this is more along roads and bridges, the infrastructure types of that.
Okay. Does, any councilors have any questions? Yes, go right ahead.
Mike, how will counties be a part of this or not a part of this? Who will not?
Counties are kind of a separate entity because in the same way that Lawrence's budget is different than Marion County's budget. So counties, to my knowledge right now, we have, we haven't had any county approval, you know, on this. You don't really feel like that counties would be very impactful to this because you're talking about impacting cities versus entire counties. Hamilton County, right now, we haven't been able to get Carmel on board right now. It's a price surprise, but Carmel doesn't seem to be buying into this, but we do have Chris Jensen and Scott Fadness and Andy Cook, Chuck, you know, Chuck Fuel, all those who are, who see the value in this. So, you know, I, I clearly feel very positive and very, very good about this. I think it's a great step forward, honestly. Looking at projects, they're going to be probably two, three, four years down the line before we see any impact, but it's something that if we look at, look to the future, we've seen the very positive impact in other parts of the state in which this type of an RDC has been very successful in getting monies.
And I think it's also important to point out that an RDC was used in 2015 to get the funding for the Red Line.
Exactly. Good, thank you, Lisa.
Any other questions for the mayor while he's up here on that? Okay, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much. I'm thinking, I'm feeling, I pretty much know my, my council. I'm thinking, Mayor, that I'm going to give them the opportunity to absorb this, and we will, we will go ahead and take this matter because I do know that there is some sense of urgency. We'll go ahead and, I'll say on the record, I will make an exception. We will hear it as committee as a whole mid-month, and we'll be prepared to vote on the matter at the mid-month meeting. Is everybody good with that?
What time?
Let's do it at 5:45.
5:45?
Yes.
I don't know if this is going to be a finding.
It'll have to go before, we'll, Sean can work that out if he has one. We'll do 5:45.
On the 15th.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have resolution number 11, 2022.
Resolution number 11, 2022, introduced by Council Chavis. A resolution of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a preliminary strategic economic development plan for the Central Indiana Regional Development Authority pursuant to Indiana Code 36-7.7.
And as the mayor mentioned, proposal number 14 and resolution number 11 are tied, so that will go to committee as a whole as well, and we'll hear that at our next meeting. Next, we have proposal number 15, 2022.
Proposal number 15, 2022, introduced by Council Chavis. A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of rates and charges for services rendered by the city of Lawrence Water Utility to reflect the repeal of the utility receipts tax effective July 1, 2022.
And I'll, I'll give a very Reader's Digest version of what Mr. Salisbury shared, shared with me, and that is, we have a deteriorating sewer problem in our city, which me, and that is, we have a deteriorating sewer problem in our city, which we've talked about many times over the years. There was a plan to look at raising those rates in 2021, but due to the pandemic, the decision was made to delay that. So Baker Tilly has done a rate study, and they've provided a recommendation, and so that will be assigned to the Finance Committee, who will be reviewing that. Oh, sorry, this is the water utility. It's still a rate study. It was still done. It'll go to Finance. Oh, yes, yes. I'm getting ahead. I got, I got a lot going on with water and sewer. Okay, let me back up. Proposal Number Fifteen, 2022, I stand corrected. Can you read that by title? Just so I can clear this up.
A proposal for an ordinance of the common council of the city of Lawrence, Indiana, adopting a new schedule of rates and charges for services rendered by the city of Lawrence Water Utility to reflect the repeal of the utility receipts tax effective July 1, 2022.
Okay. So on the 15th, we'll have a public hearing regarding this. This is my, this is a statutory requirement, so we, you know, we will be voting in favor of it, but we'll have to go through the process, and we'll have to have a public hearing. So the public hearing will happen on June 15th, okay?
Is it still going in Finance?
Yeah, yeah, we'll send it to Finance just to review, but it'll probably be a pretty quick meeting.
You want to meet at 5:30?
Yeah.
What time was that?
These are 5:45. So these are lowering the rates a little bit by cents, so I don't think this is going to be a lot of debate.
Right, there won't be much debate.
Okay. So you think 5:30?
Yeah, well, there's two things.
Or 12 and 15?
Or 12 and...
We're going to 5:15?
5:15.
Finance will meet on June 15th at 5:15.
Committee of the whole at 5:45?
And Committee of the whole at 5:45. Comments of the administration?
Good evening. Dave Hoffman with Mayor's Office. I know it's been a long meeting, so luckily, I'll be brief tonight. Three points. I just wanted to let you know that our friends at Coron's Manufactured Homes on Pendleton Pike held their annual strawberry festival this past Saturday, and we wanted to specifically thank them for their long history of generosity and amazing community spirit, which we all know. This is only one of countless examples of just that. Volunteers from Coron's and the city of Lawrence had a great time handing out free strawberry shortcakes and other goodies to the crowd under sunny blue skies. Number two, as you've already heard, I just want, we're not going to talk about this all summer long, but I do, just for public awareness, I just want to throw it out there again. Our opening day at the Fort Ben's Farmers Market this past Thursday was fantastic in our new home over at the Fort Ben Cultural Campus. This market showcased and showcases vendors from not only Lawrence but all over central Indiana that offer fresh produce, which will be increasing. It was somewhat limited, we're still in early June. Baked goods, honey, specialty food items, meats, coffee, flowers, plants, and much more. More than that, it's a social event. I think it's a great time for people to come together and enjoy each other, enjoy dinner from one of the local food trucks. I know the kids and adults alike rode on the musical swings and enjoyed the history that the campus has to offer there. There's always something for everyone at the Fort Ben Farmers Market. It will be held right there at the cultural campus from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. every single Thursday, late afternoon, early evening, all the way through October. So I encourage everyone to stop by and bring your families. Like I said, it's more than just a market. And then finally, this is the last full council meeting until, I mean, it's just less than a month away, will be Monday, July 4th, believe it or not. And starting at 10:00 a.m., our parade grand marshal this year will be a man who needs new introduction, the legendary 50-year Indiana High School basketball coach, Jack Kiefer, and Mrs. Kiefer, who will kick off the morning events with the Fourth Fest Parade, and then that will morph into a classic car show over at Community Park, a Kiwanis Fish Fry, food trucks along Harmon Way, and a music festival, which will be new this year, starting at 6:00 p.m. with a performance by Jennifer Milot. Check her out on YouTube, by the way, if you haven't seen her music, she's great. And then, of course, Big Roscoe and the Hammers, which is, they have a huge following here in central Indiana as well. They'll take the stage at 7:00 o'clock. Stage is going to be located over by the Sledding Hill, just a little bit east of there. We'll have food trucks there, and then that's going to lead up to our, right around 10:00 o'clock, in my opinion, the best ground fireworks display in the state. Haven't ever seen one better. So those are just a few of the announcements from the administration, kind of end on a positive note here tonight, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have citizens' comments.
No one signed up yet.
Thank you.
No, it's the two.
Your adjourn.